Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Sleckman's meeting of April 28th, 2021, and it is 6:00 PM. I guess we'll salute the flag first. Alrighty. We'll start with the town administrators' weekly updates.
All right, just a few things for you this week. Time doesn't permit for much more. I know everybody's seen the governor's order that she's lifted the masks for outdoors. So, that was effective today. So, I'm over at FYI, so at the transfer station, masks can no longer be required. Certainly, they're optional for the staff or for any resident, but they are no longer required, so.
So, we're going to keep it optional for the staff? Or we're just going to make it, still make it mandatory for the staff?
To be honest with you, I'd have to look to see if you can make it mandatory to Trump per executive order. I don't know if that's an option, but I guess that's your call if you want to look.
Stores can.
I'm sorry?
Stores can make it mandatory.
All right.
Well, isn't it inside? Inside is still mandatory, but outside is.
I guess, I haven't read the thing.
No, it's definitely just outside, but I think what he's referring to is New Hampshire, for example, lifted their entire mask mandate, but private-owned stores have the option of making it.
I think that as long as they're wearing it inside the buildings, if on it, they're outside, I mean, if she's lifted the mandate on it, I mean.
I agree.
Yeah, but if they're inside, they.
If they're inside, they still need to wear it. Next. Next is the election results from last night. You should have seen the email by now, but essentially, we had 162 voters out of 2,400 votes. The petition article regarding the salt did fail, and all school budget articles passed. Monday, the Zern Board of Appeals met via Zoom. They did approve findings of facts for both of the cases that were recently heard and authorized the chairman to sign the findings of facts, so those will be released, and our case is moving forward in Superior Court, so we will continue to allow Derwood to handle that on our behalf. They also voted to allow for a final extension of Gilia, a member of Great Lakes Lake Association, filed an appeal on one of Mr. Paul's permits. You've only got 30 days to file the appeal, so the motion was very clear that this would be their last extension, so I believe they scheduled it for sometime in June. Regarding the code enforcement officer and the land use, we did run it this week in the Portland Press Herald. It ran on Saturday, so you've got a few more applications that we'll have a look over. Transfer station also still has an opening. He's not getting any interest in that position over there, so if anybody's interested, applications are in my office.
Is that just a summer position part-time?
Uh, no, it's going to end up being a full-time position. Well, it's going to be a year-round part, you know. Full-time in regards to the personnel policy, but it's, you know, 20 to, I think it's got 21 to 24 hours advertised.
Everybody's right now having a hard time finding help movies. There's help wanted signs everywhere.
I know, I know. The Chair of the REC and I have been communicating. I thought this was going to be a good place to talk about it since Will is here and get some clarification, so. So, you would get clarification on the article for the parking lot was written if it included the tree removal or not. Have you found out yet? I just spoke to Will, and he said the tree guy gets $1,400 a day and believes it will be about $1,000 for him to take care of the parking lot, so I would like to have the board vote at the meeting to allow more money to be spent if so. All right, so I found last year's warrant article. It says to see if the town will vote to appropriate $2,000 for the improvement of the field parking lot. So, she's asking if the trees part of that parking lot work. I mean, I don't.
I think it was. I mean, they have to take the trees down to work on the parking lot.
They have plenty of money in their budget, so I don't think it matters either way. I mean, if they're going to, if you guys agreed to do the parking lot with Will, he, let's see, so you quoted them $1,000 to do the work of the parking lot?
Yeah, because they want me to haul them like two hundred and gravel, and I told them, you know, my time with the city.
Well, no, yeah, we're not questioning the amount. I'm just making sure that's right, so.
Yeah, that's right. And the trees, and the trees are in the roadways, the trees that were dead, they fell off the fence a few years ago. They were supposed to come last year, and the board probably cut down and whatnot, and then nobody told me to cut them off, so.
So, if they expend the $1,000 from the capital improvement fund, $1,000 for the field slash parking lot area for his work on the parking lot, they, I mean, they can fund the trees out of the remainder of that or out of their other budget, correct?
How do they, how does it read for the $2,000?
To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the REC capital improvement fund up to $2,000 for the improvements to the field slash parking lot area.
Field slash parking lot, so pretty much the whole thing anyways.
Yeah. And again, I mean, it's, her concern is she wants to make sure that she could take the other, so if we're at $2,400 and the article says $2,000, she already asked if she could take the 400 from somewhere else, and based on how the article is written, the chair said that she could, so. I don't know if they're trying to get something else out of that line or.
There's nothing in that, there's nothing in that article that says that they can't use their money for doing the parking lot without asking for more money, right?
No, I mean, the tree work can be over and above it, and she can take that money out of her regular budget.
Right, this is just the capital improvement, right? So, it's just coming out of different places, so.
We should be fine then.
And we did have a conversation about, you know, moving forward and.
Yep. I thought you meant, I thought you meant the new part when we started talking.
No, they're trying to expend money before June 30th.
So, she has, how much was the article last year? 2,000?
2,000.
Okay, and your work is going to be how much?
1,000.
Yeah, your work's going to be 1,000, so there's 1,000 left. She'd be smart to take the tree money out of her own, the other account, for fear that if Will's project goes a little more, it's still covered under the warrant article.
I mean, because of COVID, the REC has plenty of money. I mean, they're not going to spend it all before June 30th, so in any event.
So, I was just confused because I know they, I was understanding they'd put money aside to start the new parking lot.
Well, that's what I thought she was talking about when you were talking about trees.
That's why, the way it's read, the way it's read, it doesn't matter. It doesn't specify which parking lot.
No, the other, only other REC articles were for the budget, and then allowing the REC fundraisers that exceed it to be used in the current year, so. And just so we're all on the same page, so I guess the conversation I want to have is about, you know, we have a policy that says we have to go out to bid over a certain amount, we have to go out to sealed bid over another amount. I mean, that's regardless if we're using, you know, somebody that does all of our landscaping work, or all of our tree work, or our regular electrician, is that correct?
Yeah, but our bid is what, 5,000?
5,000 for sealed.
Okay.
But it is, no, it's 5,000 for sealed, and my mind's just not there.
I think we went up.
I thought it was 3,000.
No, it's less than that.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, maybe like 1,000, I can't remember.
Yeah, something like that. Purchasing policy, let's see, 1,000, yep. So, for all purchase of goods and services over $1,000, so in this case, normally, and we're going to, because this was last year's article, the tree would need to go out to, she'd have to get, they'd have to get competitive pricing. Based on policy.
If it's over, anything over $1,000.
Anything, anything being done there due to policy would have to do that.
Um, well, right, I mean, he's right at 1,000.
Yeah.
And so is the tree guy, right?
Correct, 14.
He's 14.
Right?
Yeah, I'm just, what you're saying is the tree guy and.
Oh, right, or even like the, you know, the generator at the fire station, or anything over those amounts, even, we're not exempting anybody because we have a hired somebody that we always use, is that fair? Because that's the conversation that keeps coming up, like.
Yeah, we've never, we've never gone out for bid on tree work. We've always used whoever we use, or does it Apit Hill, whatever his name is?
Right, and that's what's kind of coming up, and we've never gone out for heating stuff, you know, when we had the emergency at the fire station, we just call, when we have an electrical issue, we just call our electrician, but, so she's asking, and I, you know, I hate to pick on Will, but she's asking, you know, going forward, if she wants all this work done, is it, he's our guy, period, regardless of the amount, so where do we draw the line?
We still need.
Yeah, because the problem is too, is we ought to be at least getting some other prices, just so that we know we're, it would make him look better.
Keeps everybody honest.
Keeps everybody honest.
But we're doing it for everything.
We should, yes.
The policy, right?
Yeah.
It is.
When you get an emergency, we.
Well, that's a different story though.
But I mean, if, say, like, we're having a problem right now, trying to get someone to do the sign, okay, at least you make the attempt.
Yeah.
And if you can't, then we have to go other route, we go another route. You know, if we have to go back to the people we originally used, and because of hanging prices, at least we made the attempt to go by the policy.
That's all I have tonight, thank you.
That's it? All right, I signed all the warrants, bills. Did you both do?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. We had a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have one from last week, or do we do last week's?
I have them, I read them.
You're talking about the minutes of the meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Never mind, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All right, now. Now, the minutes of the last meeting, we've got April 21st, and we have April 14th, so I'd like to make a motion to approve both of those.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All right, so that's done. Do we have any department heads or committee chairs that want to come up and speak? Okay, we don't have any old business, so we'll move on to new business, because we have plenty of that. A, Barn Light Liquor Application Request.
So, the public hearing was held on Monday night via Zoom. We've got the statement from the fire chief saying that he walked the property today in the buildings with the two owners. He sees no issues that would stop them receiving their liquor license. The York County Sheriff's Department also emailed. Hi, Jen, I don't have any concerns, as this is the first time I've heard of the establishment. The only history we have on that address is two hang-up calls from 2009 and 2010. We didn't have anybody call in on the public hearing. We didn't have anyone from the public that was there that wanted to speak. It did run in the newspaper, and there's been all the requirements.
Want to make a motion, Ed?
Sure. I'll make a motion, we grant the liquor license for Barn Lights Events and Wedding LLC, Doing Businesses Barn Lights. It's 189 Hopper Road in Acton.
I'm going to abstain from this vote, because I did a bunch of work for these guys, so I don't want to make it look like I'm biased or anything, so.
No problem. I'm going to second it. Everything went well, and so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? That's done. Next one is Code Enforcement Appointment.
So, our fill-in, Mr. Demers, his 30 days has come to an end, so this is a reappointment of an additional 30 days while we try to fill a position.
Okay, thank you. Sound good?
So, I'll make a motion, so, I'll make a motion to, what's the date we're going to go to?
It's on May 26th.
26th, yeah. I'll read it. Certified of Appointment Title 30A R M I S A 2602. Sleckman's Office Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Michael Demers, Sleckman of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as code officer, code enforcement officer within and for the municipality of Acton until 5/26/21, given under our hand 28th day of April 2021. Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All right, moving on. C, Building and Personal Property Schedule.
So, this next document that you have in front of you is from Maine Municipal Risk Management Services. It essentially lists out each one of your buildings, and we need to review the content value, and we need to sign off to get this back to them. So, we're going to go down through the fire and rescue. That first one seemed kind of low to me, it's kind of, well, it doesn't count vehicles, remember? But it still seems low.
That would be the rescue building.
Oh, just the rescue, okay, so is that adequate, $5,000?
Well, there's only less than, less than a $50,000 there, so you're not building in the old fire station.
Really? Yeah.
Yeah, right, and then next one.
Are we doing building value too, or just?
No, the building value you guys already did. We did that a couple of weeks ago.
Man, I don't know what the, I mean, the contents of the building is going to be, it should be higher than that, because really, the only thing we own in the building is furnace, hot water heater, that sort of stuff, and a furnace is a lot more than $5,000.
So, this is, this is the new building on the side, right? Is that what you're talking about? So, do you know what's stored in there?
I don't.
Last time I was in there, there were desks and dummies and.
Yeah.
So, this is essentially to burn to the ground, what would your contacts take to?
I'd say we'd get ahold of the fire chief and have him answer that question.
Yeah. And whatever number he is comfortable with, I can insert and move on?
Yeah.
Fitness center, the old fire station, 60,000. That's the gym?
Yep.
So, that's going to be way off, right? Is that because of all the?
As soon as everything's out of it, it will be.
So, is 60,000 a value with the equipment that's in there now?
I would say that's probably okay.
You think that's okay?
We have to replace the equipment if something happened before it's moved.
Communication tower with video equipment on Blueberry Hill Farm.
Contents value, what's up there?
It's probably fine, because.
The video equipment in there?
We don't own anything in the building, really. We don't own the repeater that's in there, that's owned by Sanford Communications or whoever.
So, do you want to leave, put it zero, or just leave some sort of value?
No, I'd leave the 12, that's fine.
Public safety building with communication tower, it must be at the fire station. Check with the fire chief on that one?
Yeah.
Sand and salt building. What's in there for value, gentlemen? Sand and salt building, it says. It's valued at 506,000, the building, so it must be the actual building value.
It's the big one.
Yep.
Only thing that'd be in it would be sand and salt, right?
Anything else other than the sand salt that's in there would be covered by.
By the building.
By the contractors who own the equipment. I don't know, I guess if it's in the building, whether or not we cover it or not, I'm not sure how that works, but.
Do we store equipment in there?
Yeah, all went along.
Huh?
All went along.
There is equipment in there, all right, so. I'm going to find out, depending on whose equipment, if we have to have coverage for it?
Yeah, we may want to make sure that we, you know, because I mean, one of these guys buys a brand-new loader and has a $200,000 Lotus sitting in that garage, well, who's covering it?
Right, is it our responsibility to, will our?
We responsible for that, or is that to their?
I would think it would be their responsibility.
I would think so.
We've got to get a clarification from MMA.
It's like being in their building, you know, it's like when I load, if I load my excavator onto somebody else's trailer, it's their responsibility to that time. The same idea, so that's why I think it might be a question we want to ask.
So, if we're responsible for carrying a content value on equipment, can you tell me what the equipment, the max equipment value would be in there? So, I can be prepared to send this back?
You guys don't plan on buying brand-new loaders anytime soon, right? So, you're talking probably 25, 50 grand at the most between both of them?
Yeah.
50,000?
50,000.
And we don't have to put a value on the sand or salt in the material?
No.
Schoolhouse Orchard Road.
I don't think there's really anything in that. If there is, it's minuscule.
So, zero, is it, is it a zero?
Yeah.
Storage building.
It's this one.
Sanborn Road, so that must be.
That would be the blue building down there at the sand shed.
I would put a value on that, because the signs are going to be worth, I'd put 10 grand on it.
Another storage building, built in 1905, it's got a $22,000. This one's on San Pedro, that must be Mary Grant.
That's a Mary Grant, I believe.
Is there anything inside that building?
Never been in it.
Not really. I mean, they had tables in there last time I was up there.
5,000?
Okay.
I mean, everything really should have some sort of an interior value.
You want to put something on the schoolhouse, then, just 5,000?
Sure.
That'd be a good idea.
Town Hall, Town Office, Library, so all the contents in this entire building?
That looks low.
It does look low. I'd say at least 100, if not 100 and a quarter. And you've got desks, you've got computers. Do we have another policy on computers?
What do you mean a policy?
Do we have an insurance policy on the computers?
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, we need to, that needs to be up towards more of 100 and a quarter.
100 and a quarter?
Yeah, when you look around, we have, what's APAT worth?
Right.
What's that little room worth?
Yeah, yeah, right there, I bet you could bet up 50 grand.
I bet you could, though, yeah.
So, you want to go higher than 125?
Under 150.
Dugouts, dugouts at the baseball field?
Are those dispensed?
There shouldn't be anything in them, other than, I mean, they're pretty much all contained.
Yeah, there's really nothing in it except the.
They are the building.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any contents in the dugouts itself that I know of. I might be wrong, but.
The bleachers wouldn't have a content, the concession stands, I mean, there can't be more than a mani-finger microwave popcorn maker, I mean, it's probably, you know, a few thousand dollars worth of stuff in there.
Yeah, I would think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, 2K.
Recycling building, that's Bob, what do you think?
That's for a station.
Yeah, that's going to be expensive, because that's got all the controls for the compactor and.
Now, are you looking at number, which one, are you looking at the recycling building and then the next one now?
Well, that's got the compactor.
Even then, that's cheap.
Yeah, because the compactor, what's that compactor go for, for the cardboard?
Probably looking at over 100, or right around 100.
Yeah.
Well, compactor for the cardboard, and there's two of them in there, isn't there?
I believe so.
Yeah, those are new, they're probably 80,000 apiece.
Yeah.
Yep, and there's other assorted stuff in there, yeah, that's.
Yeah, there should be something there.
Yeah, the recycling building should be more upwards of 150. Double check with Bob on it, but there's, when you actually stop and look at what's in there, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I would think that'd be adjusted quite a bit.
And he's got the machines that bust up the glass and that sort of stuff.
That's all stuff we'd have to replace.
Right.
But that is going to build it now.
Yeah, that might be covered under a auto policy.
Equipment policy.
Yeah, equipment.
But say, that might be another one.
Maybe there's another policy for equipment up there.
There is, we have a separate with the building and equipment, and then the content, so.
Okay.
All right, I'll double check on those. So, with the changes that were made, permission for Kim to sign off, this is Michelle apparently emailed it, and we didn't get it on the agenda, it's a quick initiative, so we need to give Kim permission to sign off and to fill in those numbers.
All right, so it's okay for me to sign?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we authorize you to sign the valuation building, evaluation statements with MMA.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Today is the 28th.
Oh, don't sign that one. We're going to make all those changes and get updated information. That's just so we don't have to wait till next Wednesday.
Scammy.
Sorry.
No problem. All right, moving along. E, Paving Bid.
All right, so the gentleman in here tonight, so we're going to discuss it. The current bid that we have expires June 30th of 2021. There was, I think, some talk amongst one or two of you about possibly doing it per job, or possibly extending it through December, so they're not having to go out to bid in the middle of summer. They're here and want to give you a little input, and then you guys can decide what you'd like me to do.
When I asked Jen, I was this last night, didn't you say the current bid now was still?
June 30th.
June 30th, so I talked to Adam, and I don't know if we should wait that long to go out to bidding, and I mean, if you're having to go out, you'd have to wait two weeks, and you'd be in August, but theoretically, if you get ready to find a pave then anyway, by time you do all your prep work and all that stuff.
I mean, when do you plan on paving? Do you have anything ready yet?
No, not yet, that's what I mean. So, I got nothing ready yet, so.
I mean, we can go out and make, we don't have to wait until, I mean, we can go out.
Well, there's a problem. If they decided they wanted to pave like in a couple, three weeks, or before June 30th, and they got, I forget what you're getting per ton, but say, if you're saving $70 a ton, and you got, you got stuff you could do now, but if you put it out and you get a higher price, you know, whether or not they're going to hold to that 31st or not, you know.
Well, I mean, we have a contract with Pike, that they have to through June 30th.
Yeah, so I guess it probably doesn't matter, because, I mean, you're not ready for it anyways, so.
No, and like I told Adam, if you've got $50,000 left, why wouldn't you roll it into it, unless you really had to do something right now, so it's pretty, I don't say we would have a problem going on right now.
So, we go out and the prices will be effective July 1st?
Well, that, that holds until the 31st of June, and so they have to go by that.
Exactly.
But if we can get a price so you guys can plan your stuff after June, it'd probably be a good idea to get it taken care of right off.
Right.
So, like Will said, you don't have that lag time of waiting for all the bids, and who's going to do it, who's not, then getting on the schedule. That's the big problem. Yeah, yeah, and they probably don't have you on the schedule yet, because they don't know if you're doing it or not, so they're doing it, so.
What about doing it by calendar year, as opposed to fiscal? So, if we, if we put one out to bid right now on this and extended that to the end of the year, and then in January or December go out to bid for the entire next year, we won't have to mess with this midway, midway through the year.
Problem is that with that, the issue you're going to have with that is you won't get anybody to give you a good number, because what's going to happen is, if you're going to come out in January, or something like that, to do your paving bid, you've got all those months that not knowing what the asphalt price is actually going to be in, you know, May, when they start laying it. So, what ends up happening is you're going to get a high price to cover the unknown. The fiscal year, we did it with a fiscal year once it worked, but the same problem you have is you have that overlap through the winter, and you don't know what the springtime's going to do to you. It'd be very rare to, I highly doubt anybody'd even give us a price to do that. How about doing it by road?
Have you seriously priced for a road?
So, if you had a road you were going to do, if you were going to do the H Road, you're going to do a mile of H Road from this point to this point, get a bid on that? I don't know, just throwing out other ideas, it might be better, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, I feel like you probably, you know, I want to be paid more.
I don't know. Well, I, I'm afraid you probably would, and you'd come in the same problem, say, okay, like, right now you have no roads ready, so if you went to them and said, okay, I So if you went to them and said, okay, I want a price on this road, this road, this road, and, you know, you're con, you know, they're going to do a contract too, because they're not going to hold that for a year. They're only going to hold that until the next time the asphalt takes off again. So that'll get you on that end of it, because, well, I gave you this price for asphalt, and what, because they always put that stipulation in there.
And the problem is, like, with the road permission law, it's like, you set that up, like, I ran into it down here, like, you have that set price for that road, unless they have the, well, it was for a section, I love the section, then have to come out, you're repaying just as much as you did the first time, so.
Just ideas, that's all.
Yeah, no.
All right, so we're going to go out to bid effective July one, twenty twenty, it's going to say the exact same thing, per ton laid, handwork, curbing reclaimed, you don't want to make any changes to last year's bid, you're happy with the way it was? Okay? So if we advertise it the first of the week, if all goes well, run it for the first couple of weeks in May, we'll get our list of people, that we'll send it out to, remember, don't, and I say this, Adam's new, don't allow anybody to give you a bid.
Yeah.
Send them all, mail them in.
Yeah.
Gain carries.
The price is going to be good until when?
I think what I heard was you were sticking with June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, because our fiscal year is July, July first, anyway, it's not March.
Yeah, we're just starting a little early going out to bid, that's all. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
So guys, it's going to go to, it's going to go to F R. Carroll, Dayton, Pike, let me Scott and Shaw Brothers. Do you have anybody else, and let me know.
You might want to throw Brox in there.
Yeah, I'd throw Brox in.
Where are they at?
Rochester. I'm not sure where their actual office is, but.
You got Dayton Sand there?
Oh, well, this isn't the sand folder, I don't have it handy, but I can pull it out of the drawer.
I know, you're reading them off, was Dayton Sand on that list?
Oh, do I have, I think you were asking if I had the sand bid, Dayton Sand, yes.
Okay. Shaw Brothers?
Yeah, I heard that one, I thought.
Yep, you did.
Just checking. The hamster was moving and. Did they bid on last year?
Well, sometimes they don't, but.
They did, they did one year for us. They just bid it differently.
All right, well, we'll move on to F, which is our warrant and finance questions.
All right, so we have just a few questions we need to go through. Michelle and I have pretty much got all the answers and everything together for you, but a couple of them, A, we want your blessing, but B, some of them are direct questions to you. So would the selectmen be willing to add account numbers to Article twenty-one, and I apologize, I don't have the warrant in front of me, but Article twenty-one, I believe, is the one that talks about all the rollover accounts. The treasurer did indicate that she has no issue doing that if the board doesn't, doesn't have a problem with it, so go to that one.
I'm good, I'm fine with it.
Do these monies have to be carried forward following the year by statute in Article twenty-five? Article twenty-five, I believe, is the earned paid leave account. The treasurer's response is that I believe it would be, would make sense to carry forward the funds rather than raising the funds annually, as many will never use the time, so she doesn't expect, expect the fund to zero out. The fund is not set up as a reserve, so it will have to be included in the carryover fund article the following year. The statute does not require the funds to be carried, but does require that we fund it annually. So she thinks that it makes more sense to carry it forward.
Okay.
Going for recommendation.
Yep.
Mr. O'Call would like a report from the state internal revenue auditor's assessment report. At one of the meetings when we discussed it, we turned over the MVR, it turns out that wasn't the document that he was looking for. I sent this email to John O'Donnell, because the word of the way it is, it's not clear on exactly what that is, so I sent it to O'Donnell, the owner of the company, and, he, he has, he's put together what he believes the best guess of what they're referring to, that doesn't, as worded, that document, it's not a specific document, but he's pretty sure he knows what it is, so we're going to just forward that on from, from O'Donnell's.
Okay.
Is there going to be a fresh air, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, is there going to be a fresh air installed with the new furnaces and air conditioners? I haven't done anything with that one, I'm waiting.
I think you had a quote from.
Well, we have a.
Included that.
Well, we have a quote from Synical.
Yeah.
It must not have said anything in the breakdown, or I'm guessing they wouldn't be asking.
But you were getting another quote from him, that showed a breakdown for an air intake system, I think.
Yeah, when I talked to him, he said it wasn't a big deal.
Yeah. It was an email you sent out, but.
Must have been the original, because I've only gotten one from him. So.
Because we tabled that.
There was something, I read something after the first one, after the original one, I thought.
I'll double check. So if it's in the email, then certainly easy enough, we'll send that along.
It was after the conversation we had about the air intake system.
Because I know I still haven't gotten the second one from him.
Yep.
So, but if it's not in there, just so I don't have to come back, how do, how are we handling this answer, if it's not in the bid, if it's not in the specs?
I think it makes sense.
That we have it.
To put an air intake system in.
Well, I do too, because it is a public building, and most public buildings have that, and if we're going to go do this, let's, let's do it.
I think, I'm almost positive, I read it on the.
And I can check.
Yeah, when I talked to him, he mentioned it, so.
You know, I mean.
But we ought to clarify it before we say.
I mean, unless it was the, unless it was the system for the burner, but I think.
He may, he may need to adjust the, the bid too, it's a possibility, because it probably wasn't.
Yeah, it's going to be, if it's not, if it's not included, it is going to be more money, but I think it makes perfectly good sense to do it.
Next one. Would the selectmen be willing to add, a list of foreclosures shall be listed in the town report by map and mark to Article seventeen. Article seventeen, I'm guessing, is the one that talks about the treasurer not having, doesn't have a right, or, the town authorizes the treasurer to waive foreclosure fees, and, you know, you guys to grant quitclaim deeds.
We've never done that before, have we?
Well, I mean, I guess I'm not sure what the purpose of having it in the town, in, in the warrant article is, I mean, we.
It's on the town report.
Well, and, so, and let's think about this for a second, because I spent some time trying to, so our town report is supposed to be however the town stands as of the last day of the fiscal year. So as of June thirtieth of each year, I can't remember the last time we owned a foreclosure property as of June thirtieth. So we, we foreclose in December, we do write to redemptions, January, February, I mean, short of this Ruby Reed property, I mean, we have always sold the property back, you know what I mean? I mean, I know that we had the C K investments to land on H Road, that was, I'm going to say early two thousands. You know, I can't remember the last time we, you know, I mean, that it would even be relevant, but I don't know why they want that, and it's just, that's just the next question.
I don't think it's a they, I think it was just a one person, too.
Oh, okay, so I mean, it, it may be easier to just, I mean, it's certainly, it's going to be unpaid tax, it's going to be in the town report, but to make the warrant article longer.
Yeah, because it's in there anyways, because.
Well, if it's unpaid tax.
Are there foreclosures in that book, though? I've never noticed that, and I, I don't know, I feel funny about putting it in there.
You're not, because it would be owned by us.
Well, it's however, those tax books, and I'm looking at it in front of me, the taxes are however the property sits as of June thirtieth.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying, if, as of June thirtieth, the last time we've owned a property, you know what I mean, because, because what's happened is the cycle has already come through, we foreclose in November, December, okay?
It would be a year old information, really.
It's not that it would be a year old information, we don't own anything come June thirtieth.
Right.
It's not, what did, or, the question is, what did you foreclose during?
He's looking for, as ever, that we had owned it at one point.
Oh, so you, okay, so that's a difference, so you're looking, if you're looking for anything that we foreclosed on in the calendar year, that's probably not in there.
I was going to say, that's what I'm thinking he was looking for.
But that would be like saying, put the taxes that are outstanding in, in January, February, March, I mean, there's got to be some date. So to say the foreclosed property is as of June thirtieth, there's probably never going to be any, except from, I mean, random years.
The only thing that I could see where it would be a benefit would be so that when someone looks back in the, you know, and say, okay, well, this was, where did this foreclosure stuff go, just to keep track of it.
If I wanted to know what's foreclosed, can I come in here and ask?
Yes, but you're like, right, so you just foreclose on the two thousand and nineteen tax year, so in that town report are all outstanding two thousand and nineteen taxes.
Yeah.
And then in the auditor's report, checks and balances of the amount, I mean, I mean, we can put whatever we can in the town, you know, whatever you want in the town report, I don't, I personally, and it may be a good reason.
I don't want to put foreclosures in there myself, but I just feel.
I don't know why you would add it to the warrant article, there might be a reason, I, I just, I was embarrassed, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't see it being relevant.
Do you have anything to say, Dennis?
Yeah, the rationale for doing that was.
What was that?
That the town report is the official document of the operations of the town for that fiscal year, and what you're supposed to be able to do was go back, like David said, it's a, it's a historical document, and you should be able to look back to nineteen thirty-seven, for example, and see what the town, the operations and the cost and actions of the town for that year. And that was the rationale for doing it.
And on the flip side of that is that there's a lot of, you know, I mean, we do a lot of quitclaim deeds during the year, you know, I mean, that's not, not going to be the only, you know, we're talking about important documents or quitclaim deeds, or, you know, in, you know, we discharge a lot of liens, I mean, there's a lot of other things that are filed at the registry. I mean, it's, you know, it's a few more words in the article, it's, it's up to you guys, I mean.
So I, I, I don't know, I should know this, if I just, for some reason, I'm drawing a blank here, do, when we put liens on tax property now that people's name are in the book, is, is it actually listed leaned?
No, it's not, no, I mean.
I didn't think so.
No, it's, I mean, the two thou, well, no, it'll, yes. It says two thousand and nineteen leaned properties.
Okay, yeah.
It will say leaned and non-leaned, right. Michelle's thought is, I have no issues with this, typically if we have an actual foreclosure on property, we would include it in the town report anyways.
So can you put right along, where instead of putting lean, put foreclosed on, right on the same list, would that be the same thing?
Isn't that what they're asking for?
So, okay, so.
Instead of putting it in that article, where you've got the list of all your people who owe their taxes, and you have lean, have foreclosed.
So I guess this is the piece that, that I'm struggling with, so I'm required to put the tax balances as of June thirtieth of every year. So if you come in on June twenty-ninth, you will not make the book, you have paid your taxes, okay?
Okay.
So if it's June thirtieth, that foreclosure, you know, so if, if we foreclose, so we're talking about June of twenty-one, if we foreclosed in December of twenty, okay, we foreclosed in twenty, the town owns it, in January you gave the property owner the chance to, to buy it back, and they did. Now, February, you're, you're signing a quitclaim deed, like the whole thing never happened, come June thirtieth, they don't have any outstanding taxes.
So that, that wouldn't be, I mean.
So.
That's what I'm saying, like, the Ruby Reed is going to be a rare one, because come, well, I say come June thirtieth, we're going to own it, if all goes well, we're going to sell it before then.
So what you're saying is, for the June thirtieth, they might be under foreclosure, they might have foreclosed on, but we give them that extra time to buy it back, they might have bought it back, and then, so it wasn't really foreclosed on.
Right, I guess, I mean, if, if the tax.
If you look back in the tax book, it will show foreclosed, but it wasn't.
Well, it was foreclosed on, we did own it, but they bought it back.
But we didn't take it.
But how is that different than saying, you know, okay, so we foreclosed on it in January, so then why not put, if, if David's taxes are unpaid in January, why are we only picking the June thirtieth date? Do you know what I mean? The, the law, I, I mean, I guess, let's hold off on that one, so I can pull the statute and what's actually required, because the June thirtieth tax balance, there is a statute in there, so let's do a little more research on that one. But like Michelle said, if there's an actual foreclosure, I mean, they are in there under the year, you just have to look for them, they don't say foreclosure, but they're, you know, leaned accounts and. But, I mean, do a little more digging on that one, but we'll try to answer the rest of these questions anyways. Is there a proposed contract for the work at Canal Bridge, I believe after watching, oh, okay, so is there, is there a contract for Canal Bridge? Now, last week we talked about all of the questions, and I think it was one, three, five, and six that wasn't answered, and I have not replied yet to tell him that, you know, the only answers you guys are moving forwards regarding Canal, but this kind of ties into it.
There is a contract.
No, there's no contract.
The estimate he gave us says contract on it.
But we, what we signed on it, we can't sign a contract if we don't have the money.
Right.
We signed a.
But he says, is there a contract? There is a contract, it's just not signed.
A proposed contract, right, and we haven't signed it yet.
I thought we'd worded it differently, though, because we can't legally sign a contract.
Well, and it's not, it's not a signed contract, but there is a contract.
You're thinking of the, you're thinking of the other, the letter we signed.
Unsigned contract, that's contract, it ain't a contract unless I've signed it.
This just says, is there a proposed contract?
Right, and there is a proposed contract.
What did we sign? I remember we signed.
That was a, that was something that, that he hoped.
The letter of intent.
Letter of intent, yes.
Yeah.
Isn't that what we're talking about?
No, he's looking for a contract.
We have a two-page document that has, that has the information on it, what he's going to do, and the price at the end.
Yeah.
And it says on it, contract.
Proposed contract, yeah.
Yes. I didn't think it said proposed, I didn't think it said contract.
And they have, well, they may not say proposed, but in any event, they have that.
Right, so yes, there is a contract.
Everything we have from.
Well, they, so what it is, is they've got the proposed, proposal, there's no signed contract.
He's not asking for a signed contract, is there a contract?
He's asking for the proposal is what he's asking for.
And I thought it had got sent to him, and it showed everything that.
But, I mean, the packet that, the original packet that went out, before all of this, before the, the meeting that we came to, and before the bridge gentleman came here, they have everything from us. The only thing the warrant of finance might not have on this is that letter of intent, because that was signed afterwards, but any document.
That was, that ended up being new anyway.
Yeah, right, he didn't like.
So.
However, the scope of work was changed after we came here.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
And that, I, I think is what.
Maybe that's, okay. Yeah, because we were under the.
Proposed contract from beginning to finished project.
Originally, we were, they thought two towns were doing it, that now he's going to do it all, so.
So you're right, Jen, could you get all of it? About that part, I don't remember.
All right, let me, I'll check my emails, we can resend it, simple enough.
We, I think we do have the proposal that he gave us with all that included, remember, when we were picking it up?
No, we have everything, it's just a matter of.
Yeah. I bet I, I was pretty sure that you guys had that at the last meeting.
Well, I'll review the emails, I can find it.
As silly as it sounds, I could go out and look in my truck right now, because I think I have it right in the truck.
Well, I mean, I, there's no question that the town act in half, it's just whether or not.
I'm not corporate at that, I'm.
So I will resend it, it's not a big deal, to get through these answers and.
Maybe Tom doesn't have that, you know.
Okay, okay.
That has all the information and stuff, and, you know, what's what, and what we're using, and how, how it's being done.
So I'm not sure if, um, like I said, I haven't answered all the questions, remember the last email with all the itemized questions of the, of the Canal Bridge, and I, and I knew that, um, I need somebody's help in, in writing those responses. I need somebody to physically sit down at my desk, whether it's the road commissioner, or one of you with the knowledge, but, I mean, we took extensive notes at the last meeting, and I, I have no road knowledge, I'm not understanding half of the things that you're saying, in regards to his answers, you know what I mean? And it's just not an easy response for me to send, and it's Tom, so I want to make sure it's perfect.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm asking for some help from somebody, and that's why we haven't sent that one, but the rest will be out tomorrow sometime.
Okay, because, as you know, we're supposed to have a, hopefully a fine meeting Monday.
Monday.
And I know these, well, I sent the questions forward, because I was asked to, and they'll expect some kind of reaction, definitely, I'll assume.
Do we, we think this is going to be, so how many, just out of curiosity, how many articles did you actually vote on at the last meeting?
Twenty, or twenty-one?
Twenty-six or twenty-nine?
Yeah, I don't think of, yeah.
Twenty-something.
Then I understand there were some questions regarding the zoning articles, did you vote on those?
Uh-uh.
Yeah, we voted on.
Because Kim said you didn't.
You didn't vote on the, the rental one, did you?
What the, what the vote was, uh.
Did they vote to?
To table that ordinance.
So they voted against it?
They voted to table it for another year, until they, they say, they said that needed a lot more work.
Okay.
Okay.
So is there, do you think that you can send me the recommendations they have so far?
Yeah, I can do.
I mean, I might as well get started on it in between things, especially if you think you're going to finish Monday night, and see.
Well, I hope we do.
Maybe we could, at the beginning of the meeting, say, you know, we're here to vote, and vote the way you feel, and let's kind of get through this, whether it's yes or no, it's going to go to the town floor, right?
It's not a limit.
I know.
Now, I'm wondering, and this is just a question, I don't know if the other two of you have watched it, but there's, um, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if it would be helpful if, if the full board and, if we all went to the meeting, and I say that because.
I don't know all the answers either, so.
Well, and I struggle with some of the, with some of the, you know, we had a, we had a budget meeting on a Saturday, as we went through line by line by line of every penny of everything, and someone from the floor said, oh, the town minister makes ninety thousand, is that correct? Two members of the warrant and finding said, yes. We just had a meeting, we went line by line, do you know what I mean, so I, I don't know if it would be easier, the misconceptions and the, you know, the unanswered, I'm wondering if it'd be easier for us to, to go, and so we could answer them, or, or show them.
I know, but the unfortunate part is that we've met with them twice, and if they don't know the right answer by now.
Well, I don't know, I don't mean like that, I want to be helpful.
We're going to extend that, that, I mean, like, extend, it'll be doing two more meetings to get it passed, or, I mean, I'll go if, if the rest of the board feels, but.
I mean, I just want to be able to be there to, to answer the questions if they come up, so that he, they can get through it, um, you know, that, there's a lot of questions that, you know.
You want to come on Monday with me? I mean.
My intent with the next meeting with Jen was correcting what I said about your salary.
No, I, I didn't watch it, I was spoken to by somebody.
I, I just.
You were one of them, yeah, that's fine, no, and I wasn't going to.
Somebody asked if that was your salary, and I said, yes. In, in, in a sense, it's the way people look at something.
Right.
Some people consider your salary, whatever it costs to have an employee.
To run the whole department.
And that's, that's all.
And that was just one of the, some.
And some people say, no, that's different.
And I guess, as I know, we're going into general government and going into these things where they may have questions, I don't expect a volunteer committee of the warrant and finance, or even a selectman, to know all of those answers on the spot, I just think it's helpful if we're there to at least provide the information.
Well, I'm going to be there Monday, why don't you come Monday? Do you want to come Monday?
I would rather go than have misinformation.
Well, that's, well, that's what I'm saying, I'm going to be there, so why don't you come, and then.
Probably more, it's probably more so important for you to be there than us.
If it's, you know.
And maybe Michelle, I don't know, yeah.
I was just.
You know everything that Michelle knows, but Michelle knows the fine detail.
Right, so if they did have questions about things that I can't answer, at least the two of you were there.
I, at the same time, if, if some of the board is not there to back these guys up.
That's why I said I'd be there.
So if, if we're not sending these guys, then, then I'll, I'll go.
I'll be there.
Certainly, we won't speak unless spoken to or asked any questions, I'm, we're just there to help, I mean, it's, you know, your, your warrant, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of information in there, I just think it might be helpful, and I don't know if it would allow them to move through it quicker, if the answers are right on the spot, and not have to wait for, for things like that. I'm just trying to be helpful.
I guess that is a lot of information to, to have to understand.
Well, and that's why I thought if we were there, we could help.